Please rise. Congratulations. Congratulations to the choir.
To America and to the Republic of which it stands. And to God.
Indivisible, liberty, justice.
Copies of draft meeting minutes for February 19th that have been provided by council members and outside and posted on the city website. The treasurer's report, copies of the city treasurer's report as of February 28th is located in a binder at City Hall and also uploaded to the city website for review. The committee reports are on your desks, the copies up them. And we have one communication which you all have on your desk inviting council members to a special annual ceremony to memorialize victims of drunk driving. The first resolution is appointing four people to as commissioning deeds in for the city of Hudson, Columbia for the following term, April 1st of this year through March 31st of 2021. Excuse me, can I have an introduction and a second? DeWan. Second? Tiffany? Let's put this one aside for a second because we're going to have a conversation about it and go on with the shorter ones. First, a resolution authorizing a transfer to fund additional 2018 social security. I don't believe this has gone before the Finance Committee. And if it did do that before our next meeting, in the meantime, we can introduce it and get a second. Tiffany? Second? A resolution authorizing a transfer to fund financial services related to the firehouses. This too, I don't believe, has been presented for finance yet, but as per the new procedure, we can introduce it and have a second. Can I have an introduction? Tiffany? Tiffany, and a second? Okay, the next, excuse me. The next resolution accepts on behalf of the Department of Youth the funds of $9,092.47 from the donors listed on the attached document, from the Culver Fund. Can I have an introduction and a second? Tiffany? Second? And finally, the city of Hudson Fire Department received the exact same amount as their half of the proceeds from the Culver Fund. Can I have a introduction and a second, please? Rich? Okay, let's go back to this resolution number two. This is a resolution supporting universal rent stabilization control. Now, before we discuss it, this is mainly a resolution supporting the states, encouraging the state to allow municipalities to make their own decisions about rent stabilization. So for all this that we'll learn about here, it's really just about that at this point. So we can get hung up in the details or we can just say we should be allowed to discuss this on our own in the future. Having said that, I open it to discussion and we have Rebecca Gerard here to lead us through some of these resolutions, I mean, some of the details of this resolution. Let's start with the Tiffany, would you like to?
Well, thank you. This resolution is a law that pretty much was included only for downstate New York and it expired and now is the time for us to reach out to our state officials and ask them to include all of New York State. This resolution came out of the Housing and Transportation Committee that just passed this week and I leave it to Rebecca now.
Rebecca, is it accurate to capitalize it as boiling down to just allowing us to then have this conversation about all these details?
So the resolution absolutely is, the resolution absolutely is a measure of support to the state legislature on these four bills. The first three really aim to close loopholes on the ETPA, which at this point in time applies to six counties only in New York State, which are in New York City and Westchester. We expect that a bill will be pending soon. We don't have the bill number yet, but Senator Greslin will be sponsoring it, which will expand ETPA to the entire state.
You know what ETPA is?
Certainly. Emergency Tenant Protection Act, which is really thought of as rent stabilization. The last bill on this does kind of stand on its own, the Good Cause Eviction. What that does is provide a different level of tenant protections and I could, so I can go through each one in detail if you think that would be helpful, even though you have the fact sheet in front of you, perfect. So let's go over the first three as a bundle since they really aim to close ETPA loopholes, right, rent stabilization loopholes. So the Preferential Rent Act, and I am going to name the sponsors because I think it's important to give them credit where credit is due, which was sponsored by Senator Liz Krueger and Assemblyman Steve Simbrowitz. Right now, preferential rent is a discounted rent that tenants, again, so this right now is only applying to counties that are covered by the ETPA, which are the six counties. So as you noted that, I want to preface my statements with that. So that they are only allowed to, tenants are protected to pay that preferential rent, but when the tenant renews their lease, the landlord is able to almost opt out of the rent stabilization. So this aims to close that loophole, to say when the lease is renewed, it has to be renewed within that same rent stabilization protective bubble. Similarly, vacancy deregulation. Landlords are able to take that rent control department out of the rent control bubble when the tenant leaves voluntarily. And so a new tenant moves in and now they're able to charge really as high a rent as they want to the next tenant. So it's just saying that we want to close that loophole so for the next tenant that moves into that apartment, they have the same protections as the tenant that was there before them. And then vacancy bonus. This is a strange one to me, if you ask me. So right now, there's a, there's a rule that says every time an apartment turns over, that the landlord is able to receive a 20% of the rent statutory vacancy bonus. So I'm sure the intent was that it was a hardship, right, that every time there's a turnover in tenancy, if you're a landlord, but in actuality, what has happened is that it's really incentivized landlords to have a high turnover in tenancy because it's financially beneficial to them. So we want to repeal that vacancy bonus. So those three really go to kind of fix some of the problems that exist within the ETPA system. And I, and I do want to say the sponsors. So the sponsors of the vacancy bonus are Senator Jose Serrano and Assemblyman Victor Pichardo and vacancy decontrol is Senator Andrew Stewart-Cousins and Assemblywoman Linda Rosenbaum.
Do you have your own second?
Please.
I'm not sure we identify who you represent.
I'm sorry, I am the State Mid Housing Organizer with Citizen Action of New York. And we are, and we are a member of the House of Justice for All Coalition, which should also be stated. You're welcome. Thank you for pointing that out. Okay, so the last bill, the Good Cause Eviction Bill, is sponsored by Senator Julia Salazar and Assemblywoman Pam Hunter. And I want to point out that Pamela Hunter is from Syracuse. So, you know, that right there proves to me the point that this is not just a downstate issue. So the sponsor of this Good Cause Eviction Bill is an upstate Assemblywoman, right? So I mean, she's seeing these problems in her district and that's an upstate district. So this bill really provides several protections. One, it gets rid of the idea that when a lease ends, a landlord can move into a month-to-month situation. It almost creates an automatic lease renewal in the sense of the monetary piece of a rent situation, right? So if, if a tenant wants to move, they're still allowed to move, but a landlord can't use that as a means to raise the rent. In addition, and we see this a lot, tenants are afraid to complain about substandard housing conditions, unsafe housing conditions, for fear of retribution in the form of eviction. So this would protect against that. It literally says what it means, the name of the bill is the Good Cause Eviction Bill. It means that a landlord cannot evict a tenant without a judge saying you have good cause for this eviction. So if a landlord is not getting paid their rent, they would have every right to evict the tenant. This is not asking landlords to bear an unreasonable burden, but it is saying you cannot use your, your power as a landlord in a predatory, predatory or retaliatory capacity. So I think I'll pause there as a summary and I'm happy to answer questions in regards to the specific bills if anybody has any.
Well, let's start with the council.
What would you estimate the cost might be if Hudson were to do rent stabilization?
I'm really glad you asked that because I meant to bring up in my presentation. All of these bills are budget neutral bills and that's hugely important. So there is no cost to the taxpayers for these bills to be passed. They are budget neutral. There are no expenditures tied to these bills in the state budget. So implementation, first of all, if they were passed at the state level, it wouldn't affect your constituents' tax dollars. I see no reason it really should affect the tax dollars. I mean, honestly, it just places on the landlords of this wonderful city a responsibility to follow certain rules and practice certain humane procedures as they carry out their duties as landlords. If that didn't happen, then procedures could be taken against them by, you know, proceedings in housing court, but I don't know, you know, those would be tenant-driven and those, I don't see this being a huge cost burden to the city.
I'm always leery of something that's free. So the cost would be essentially the new requirements on a landlord and first, let me say, no, 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 I am for Housing Justice for All. My questions are not meant to say that I don't think the rents are too damn high, they sure are here and there. But in assuming, I think this is an awful lot to ask us to understand and then vote on a week from now.
A week.
Right. And I asked the NACOM, the New York Conference of Mayors, and they're doing some research to find out, you mentioned Dawsoning, which I'll, I'll get in touch with him and point that out, but just to see what has happened to other towns or cities that are about our size. What, if anything, does it do to interest in investing in Hudson? I support the purpose, certainly fairness and closing loopholes, but I'm leery of voting yes or no to something as complicated as, as rent stabilization and renters' rights in such a short period of time.
Well, that's a good point. Can I just, I'm so sorry. I just want to point this out. We have this book here that is in accounting and, and for the city of Hudson, our people, and it's Tenant Rights Guide. And pretty much what she's talking about, rent stabilization, is all included in this book, what it means, how it started and why it's for. So it's something that we already have in the city of Hudson, but with this bill, it's supporting our people, it's supporting the tenants, it's not taking away anything from landlords, it's just making sure that the tenants are protected and landlords are not abusing their power to say, oh, well, this tenant moved out, so now I'm going to raise it another thousand dollars. You know, we already are in a position where, like you just mentioned, the rents are high here and there, people are not able to afford it, people are moving out of the city. And we, me, myself, want to protect the people in the city and they want to remain here and I would like to see them remain here so we could have some way that...
We don't have rent stabilization in Columbia County.
No, but just like the council president mentioned earlier, if this gets passed from the state level, this gives an opportunity for us to discuss how and which way we want to pursue.
Right. And that's, that is what I'm concerned about, voting to open it up, to give us the chance to make that consideration without having any idea of what the impact might be on the city of Hudson, on investment here, on renters here. And I don't have an opinion one way or the other, I just don't know enough.
And I think those are valid points. I would just want to clarify a couple, so I'm not certainly here to do anything other than provide points of clarification in regards to the legislation. I want to point out that if this legislation is passed, so the resolution is a support to the state government on these four pieces of legislation. If this legislation is passed, it would be an equal situation for all 62 counties of New York. So you wouldn't have to worry about it being not advantageous to develop in Hudson because Hudson would be in the same situation as any other city or town in the state. It would be an equal situation across the state. So, so I think that's worth noting. Two, when we talked about these being budget neutral bills and you would say, okay, the only cost would be to the landlord, so there would be no cost for these bills to any landlord in Hudson. So the only one we even spoke about that had a monetary component to it was closing a loophole of the ETPA. And let's remember, right now, the ETPA only applies to the six counties downstate. So loss of that 20% vacancy bonus is not going to affect any Hudson landlord because they're not getting the vacancy bonus right now because they're not part of the ETPA. So that's another important point.
I think this doesn't commit us to anything. This just allows us to have a future conversation.
But it's such an important matter that if it is opened up across the state and sooner or later, that's going to come to us and I won't know until that time when they help us understand what it does or doesn't do for Hudson, whether I should vote for opening it up. That's just the loop I'm caught in. I'm not necessarily opposed. I don't, I don't see Hudson as a place that, that needs rent stabilization, closing loopholes and things that are unfair to tenants, absolutely, but I'll just let it go.
I disagree completely.
Tiffany, hold on. It's Ralph.
I have two questions. First, you referenced six counties, it's eight counties, right? That's the resolution says here.
Eight, okay.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, just to make sure.
Thank you.
And Tiffany, very quickly, the booklet you have, is that online that you can just send us a link tomorrow so that we can actually all have some time to look at it before next week?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Donovan?
A couple of questions. Can you just tell me the difference between rent stabilization and rent control?
So rent stable, rent control, it's, it's a tricky subject. So rent control keeps rents at a set point and rent stabilization tries to keep them within a range of the Consumer Price Index or some other guide to a level of affordability, if that makes sense.
In terms of, you know, downstate with the rent stabilization act, wasn't some of the issues that this didn't necessarily benefit affordable housing because it didn't go by income, it went by how it continued on, you know, through family to family? Or, you know, for example, or some people didn't leave their dwelling even though the family got bigger because they didn't, they didn't want to lose, you know, their apartment? So isn't like downstate, you know, it didn't go by income, this doesn't go by income? So it really doesn't affect...
Well, what it looks at is the affordability of a neighborhood and it tries to make it affordable for everybody. I do agree with you that there were problems with the ETPA in downstate and so that was the onus or the impetus for a lot of this. So if we think about the bill we talked about where if a tenant leaves, rent control goes away, the fact that if that was eliminated, that would eliminate the need for a family to never want to leave their house and have to have more and more people live in it because they would lose their rent controlled apartment, right? Because that was, you're right, that was one of the problems, was as soon as you moved out, the rent, the rent control, the ETPA that existed on that apartment went away and then you might not find another one that was, so there's, there's actually multiple pieces of legislation. So your regulation, your resolution supports four of them, but there are actually seven or eight different bills that address housing.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out and remind all the members, we had discussed this at the Housing and Transportation and the difference, I had written down, the difference between rent control and rent stabilization is under rent control, rent can only be increased if capital improvements are made to the entire building and with the approval of the Division of Community Renewal, that board, or due to hardship with also approval from that board with written consent of the tenant. Under rent stabilization, rent can be increased and, but only set a set rate determined by the Rent Guidelines Board, which I told you, that board was created by the mayor in New York City with nine members, two of the interests of the tenants, two of the interests of property owners and five of the general public, including the chair.
Yeah, no, but I'm just incorporating this so others of the council weren't at our meeting.
Oh, I get it. And I'm just reading off the information that I have.
Sure. I'm just saying, you know.
Thank you, Mark.
I think that's, I just need some clarification. So this doesn't bind us to anything. This is just saying we're going to have a conversation about this in the future and then that will allow us to do our due diligence during that time, basically, to learn more. So I just don't get why, because we wouldn't want to have this conversation. Having, and what's we, what do we support?
I think Richard's next.
This is, maybe, maybe can we clarify? This is saying that we support, we're going to send this to, you know, to our assembly people and our old, up on the state level to say that we support these bills if they pass at the state level. So there's still, so this would say, okay, just, just point of clarity, this is just sending out a message to the state level that says that we would support this if...
We're asking them to support this legislation. That's entirety of the resolution.
And is there a minimum number of units that this applies to or?
Each bill has different, so again, there are like the bills, but usually the rule of thumb, so like one of these doesn't apply. A lot of them have exemptions if the owner of the building lives in it. So suppose you owned a two-family home and you rented out the other half, a lot of the housing bills that are on the table at the state level would exempt you from these restrictions or requirements, but usually a good rule of thumb is four or more.
Forma Dons Act, is that this one?
Correct. But again, there's, so there's, I don't want to say that with a sweeping entirety because it depends on which of the eight bills we're talking about, but I do think it's important to note that about the owner-owned dwellings because this is really meant for landlords who are professional landlords, not...
Yeah, I have a question about the rent control. For example, like in 2018, if somebody rented an apartment $800 and the tax was, for example, $3,000 and 2019, tax went up and landlord had to increase the rent, how we can control that rent?
So right now, it allows for one and a half times the Consumer Price Index of an increase, so it allows for an increase that's reflective of a reasonable cost on the part of a landlord. But, but what it's trying to prevent is that when we have development in an area and local community members are basically displaced with no planning for where they're going to live or how they're going to access affordable housing, that's really what these bills and ETPA was meant to address.
So in effect, we're not really talking about too many properties in Hudson that would really be affected by this.
Well, my guess is no. I don't know your exact statistics here. It's a powerful statement when local municipalities, I guess.
So the four unit is in a single structure and not, it wouldn't apply to a landlord who collectively owns four or more.
It's in a single structure, but again, I don't, I really don't want us to get hung up on that number because each bill has different requirements. So that's for ETPA, that's generally good, but I, but I, I want to make sure we're not, I'm not being misquoted here on that. You'd have to really look at each bill individually to know what the restrictions are on landlord-owned. But, yeah, but they're meant to be for...
So at this point, I think we're ready for an introduction and a second to bring it up at our next meeting. Tiffany? Is there a second? Go. Okay, and you know, before we actually move further, we can discuss this further in our formal meeting. So that ends our resolutions for tonight. Couple of pieces of business before we open up to the...
I was just looking, I thought we were going to have the discovery resolution tonight. See it.
Before y'all get y'all things again, I got something to say.
One second.
Yeah, one second, me, I need to say, but I got to say, I think, well, maybe...
Two seconds?
Two seconds.
For the next week thing?
Sure.
Can I just say a little something, Ralph?
I think...
Tiffany, let me speak. I was waiting right here, y'all gonna let me speak tonight? Now, hey, everybody in that place in the building, I got to speak. Now, while all y'all thinking about what y'all gonna do, don't forget the elderly and don't forget these kids. And while everybody coming in here and they trying to take over, y'all need to get some rent control up in here because mine, I cannot afford no $1,500 rent and I'm not ashamed to say it, put me on all the...
And I'm not ashamed to say, put me on all the tape, y'all want to, I'm not here to show off, I am here for the community. I love these kids, I love the elderly, and I'm not gonna let y'all sit back and forget us. So while y'all thinking about developing this and doing this, let's go take a look at the Boys Club. Everything is on my notes. Let's go take, that we need a new Boys Club, a youth center for these kids, while y'all sitting here and nobody want to represent and let to the community. I'm here for the community and I'm gonna stand up for these kids and I'm gonna stand up for the young people. Let's get a rent and let's talk about these kids. Stop the motherfucking kids. I'm a boy right there. Why y'all doing so wrong? This is my town, not your town. I am the one standing up for these kids and the community. Nobody shot me on my Facebook and sent us a meeting that night. Nobody in Japan was a meeting. I put two and two together. I am here for the community and the elderly and for these kids. I've been up in that Boys Club, it's town apart. But everybody talking about what, this, that, this and that, y'all not talking about the elderly and y'all not talking about the Boys Club, the youth center as we speak. This is my town, y'all. Y'all wrecking my town. If I go out there on Wall Street, I can't go walk in there. My kids can't walk in there. Y'all don't care for me there. Y'all taking over my town and y'all want to take me out, kill me out. Y'all care for my soul, y'all taking for my kids, y'all taking for my elderly, and y'all got all these people coming here like y'all own another place, where I was born and raised up. They took the blue ink away, now y'all trying to take the youth center. Y'all ain't saying nothing good to me. But you know what y'all all do? A boy in that parrot. Oh, she ain't nothing but a bugaboo. She ain't never gonna come up in and burn that. Y'all couldn't have the decency to go on my Facebook page and send that, it was a pity. Because y'all know what? Because y'all will stand up for the community and not block y'all. I take for myself and the community. I love these kids and I love these young people. Won't y'all stop telling all these people, fuck it? Y'all tearing me down like I'm a bitch and a jack and I'm a piece of jack. This is my town. I'm a boy right there and I'm sick of y'all taking me out. Stand up for these kids. Stand up for the kids. Stand up for me. Stand up for these kids. Ella, get some water, girl. Ella, get some water. Ella, get some water. Ella, get some water. Don't take me for God. Don't fuck with me. Can you see the way I want to be, y'all kids? These kids are not for y'all. So I'm taking them to the elderly and giving it to y'all town. Now y'all can work for them. Then y'all be a bitch. So I'm pulling me out of this. What y'all doing in your community? But y'all don't give a damn about that family. Y'all don't give a damn about the youth center. Y'all don't give a damn about the community. Y'all lying to yourself. Y'all look at yourself. Go on and look at yourself. Stop doing it. I'm begging you. You're killing me. When I die, you gonna push outside. Y'all ain't no God. Y'all taking for my kids and I can't do it, y'all know that. I'm begging Jesus, so please help me, y'all. I'm helping for these kids and these families. Y'all talking about this and that. Y'all helping the community, y'all God, Jesus, please, Jesus, please. I'm asking you to, please stop it. Stop taking on these kids, stop doing this.
I just gotta say, a few of us on here are really fighting for these kids every day.
Nigga, see I'm taking the youth center out there. I don't want none of them being... Y'all know that the youth center need out there. They want to throw all these black kids in the yard. Y'all, y'all, come on, come on, come on, y'all. Y'all don't like to hear this, y'all just want all our kids to come to y'all, man. Don't do this, gay, that, no, my mother. I'm fighting for these kids, man. He's getting a big son, man, y'all, please, don't do this to these kids, I beg y'all. I'm begging for my kids right now. I'm begging for my grandkids right, please. They ain't getting in trouble. They're not always getting present, please, I'm asking y'all, please, don't do this to the new youth. They did it to me, they did it to me. Every day for me, I don't know nothing like these kids know now. And I'm begging for all the leave right now, y'all just tell me, please, let my heart reach out to these kids that I love, man, I love these kids. I love the school district, I love all the blessing, and I love these kids, these kids are gonna be something, y'all, if y'all want to give the minority these two, y'all just, don't just give to the, go and get, get to, African American, get a Puerto Rican, give to everybody. They get, I don't want you to be mad at me. I don't want you to be mad at me, y'all, please. But please don't, please don't do this to these kids, I'm begging y'all, look out, who want to be elected for mayor for all of them, y'all just hear me out. Love these kids like I love a man. They're a good generation of kids, man, and please, don't take power. Let's fight for the kids and kids are future, they are future. It's a monster, y'all, y'all, it's a kid.
And that?
Now, look, he can't tell me, I'm not, I'm not harassing you.
But I can.
Because you don't want to hear the truth. You sitting up there like you something.
I think you said it.
Because you sitting up there, you don't even want me to talk.
You let you double time, wow, Sam. Look, this is not fair. We fought for the youth center. We fought for the budget for the youth center. There are people who opposed to it, but we fought for it. And you were here, you are here.
Y'all doing everything else for the...
We're doing other things, yeah, we can't...
I always had to shut up, you know what I'm saying?
No, you don't have to shut up. You don't have to shut up.
I was in my bracket.
You have everyone in the street, everybody else in here, and just like Juan said, there are some of us on this council that fight hard for these kids through legislation with support, with our voices, and we're happy that you're here. So you can tell these other people who don't support them why they're here and why it's important to them.
I gave you a little junk money and I'm shutting up right now. I told you the thing.
I walked on those beams, almost fell through it, it's damaged. They need a new home. I agree with you 100%.
You see the holes in the wall and what the kids got to go through? And it's all African-American kids that got to go through it. You know, they don't want, they don't want our kids there.
You know, you said everything you needed to do.
But I suppose, because Annette ain't got nothing, they give me a little money to shush y'all, so I suppose to shush y'all. Could you please take me back down the street, cause if anything got through, if anything get through tonight at somebody, y'all don't know Beyonce, cause she got little shit. Can you take, could somebody please? I don't know, no, if you don't mind me, my phone be your call. Come on, come on. You don't have to, no, 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 no.
Stay, stay, stay. You don't have to, no. Let's stay, you need to stay. You need to stay with the stewardess next. You said everything you need to say. Now listen to what they're gonna do. They don't do nothing. You gotta hear what they're gonna do so you know what to say next. And you gotta listen to them first, so you know what to say. You can't miss it. You can't miss it. You said you had, you put your heart...
I also asked all of our council members and council president, and it was asking about the youth and senior for our city of Hudson. I personally promise, I'm taking that seriously and I'm hoping that all are taking, you taking and crying seriously, and who will help, who will help you, whatever you say, who will help you about that.
And just so you know, with the Friends of Youth that created the organization to help the youth, tonight, the common council voted to accept, well, to vote and introduce the legislation for next week of the donation of $9,000 from the Friends of Youth that's going to the youth department and over $9,000 to the fire department as well. So we, we, we're doing whatever we can, because we know, you know, there's other people just like you that are afraid to come in and speak up. And I'm glad that you can, because you represent the solid people as well.
And I also thank you all for coming and telling us those things.
Well, why, why do y'all keep meetings secret? Nobody, everybody's on my Facebook page, but nobody's telling me.
It's meeting, every month, same time, every year. It's always the same.
So the youth center is having a party on the 30th, I'm gonna count how many of y'all come. And then if y'all don't come, I'm gonna shout y'all out on Facebook.
All right, yeah, I need to go. All right.
James.
Okay, a couple of seemingly mundane items. Tomorrow, and this does speak to what you're asking about in that, tomorrow, we're going to be getting the proposals about possibly turning JLE into a new youth center. That's one of the things we do have on the agenda right now. Tomorrow, the proposals for the feasibility study will arrive, I mean, will do it by four o'clock tomorrow afternoon. So anybody who'd like to be here will just be listening to who apply.
What time is that, Tom?
Four o'clock. Also, the first meeting of the housing, I mean, sorry, the zoning and planning task force is actually, in the spirit, John's not here right now, but in the spirit of what John was hoping this task force would be, which is a conversation, on Wednesday, April 10th, at the library at 6:00 PM, Alexandra Church, who introduced form codes, she's the city planner of Newburgh, and she introduced form code planning to Newburgh. So that'll really be the kickoff event. Afterwards, well, all the members of the committee, as well as anybody else in the community wants to talk about it, can join in.
What time is that?
6:00 PM.
April 10th?
April 10th, the Wednesday. Some have asked about dock management and that's, we'll put that aside till next week. Lastly, I sent you this little reminder, it's based on this, which is a rather, as you know, this is our, what we run by, and it's just to the fact that a number of people have asked why I don't vote. What I've, little history lesson, until this session of the council, there was a weighted voting system. So of course, every, the vote of the president or the chair was crucial and meant a lot. But once now that we have an equal voting system from our members, if you read this and you read Roberts, you'll see the suggestion is that the chair, in his or her impartiality, should not technically vote unless there is a tie or unless the vote requires more than a simple majority. So if you look this over, you'll see other suggestions about the basics of parliamentary procedure, which is what? We follow by our rules of order. I just thought I'd remind you of that. So that's all of our business. Now, if the council has something they'd like to raise first, then we'll open it up to the community. Tiffany.
I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers right in front of me and I will send it out to the council, but I guess some paperwork got mixed up, but I was expecting tonight that we have another resolution in support of a bill called the Discovery Bill. The Discovery Bill, it's a part of the criminal justice reform system. It's, to summarize it, it's so when DAs and prosecutors have any evidence, names of witnesses, things of that nature, that will help the defense side with their case for them to produce that evidence to their attorney so they can handle their case properly. Hudson was first city to support a resolution for the prosecutorial misconduct bill, which passed first in the nation, which has to do with prosecutors withholding evidence and using it to win their case. Meanwhile, the person who's innocent goes to prison, the person who committed the crime is still committing crimes. And then when that person is released and requests all that information and it is proven, then that person sues the state for millions of dollars. So with the prosecutorial conduct bill, that stopped, that will stop and hold the prosecutor with accountability. With the Discovery Bill, when you do your research on it for next week, when we have it in front of us, that summarizes it for the prosecutor to give whatever evidence they have to the defense side so they can handle their case properly. So hopefully we research and hopefully we'll have it next week to vote on.
Yeah, I was asking about, like, recently, the assessment went out to the residents of city of Hudson and I have a lot of phone calls, the complaint is like too high prices. So I'm asking if council can make a resolution to ask GAR associate to reassess those houses again, please.
Well, I have to ask that one of the other assessors here might know the procedure for, can you repeat that for me?
Well, the assessment went out to the residents, owner of the building in city of Hudson and is a lot of complaint coming about assessment is high.
Yep.
So I'm asking if it is possible to reassess those houses.
It's possible to...
Can you hear Jennifer, yourself in the studio?
Hi, I'm Justin, I'm the city Hudson assessor, probably not the most popular guy right now.
Yeah, you definitely are.
It is, it is possible to talk to the company and go through the review process for those homes. There should be a 1-800 number on those forms that you can call and set up a meeting with them.
There is a lot of homeowner who even really don't speak English much to explain them. So if they can come in, in city of Hudson, it will help to those owner of the building. I don't know if they'll go by it.
Okay.
Well, they are doing the reviews in Hudson.
Do you have assistance for bengali speakers?
Not that I know of, but I'm sure we could work on it. I'm sure we could work on it.
And it's been?
Yeah, I'm sure we could work on it.
Yo, you got to take me out of here, because I might just blow in, the police might take, I gotta go. I gotta go, I gotta go, I gotta hurry up and go, because I'll be upset if I don't want to put me in jail.
Can I ask a follow-up question about the...
Well, I don't know if the council turned it yet, but it's kind of a procedure. Did you have a question, the one?
No.
Oh, okay.
It's the same question I have.
Okay. Rebecca.
I was just, I was thinking about the board that was in the first board. I'm a homeowner and I was speaking to a person who has been through some of these kinds of assessment experiences before and told me about something called a tax cert attorney, a certiorari attorney, which is something that, it's a kind of attorney that specifically deals with assessment issues. And I guess what I'm really curious about is whether there's any kind of precedent for like on a ward by ward basis or something like that, citizens getting together to basically hire an attorney to represent them as a group.
Not that I'm aware of, but that, that doesn't sound outrageous. That sounds reasonable.
Why not? I mean, it's not really something the city can, obviously, but...
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, maybe I didn't hear you right, but you said you all are here all week to answer questions? Is that what you said earlier?
The company, the 1-800 number, I mean, they're waiting by the phone to set up reviews with any homeowners who want to challenge their assessments. I believe the letters went out last week.
I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think Alderman and Don was asking if he can set up a meeting with you or with someone from GAR so that way the public can come in and you can answer their questions and also have some translators there at the same time for those that don't speak English.
I am, I am here all week, I can work on translators.
You'd be open to a public meeting, so you would answer questions for everyone that received these assessments?
Yeah, I would be open to that.
Ryan, did you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question, like, I don't understand how the assessment did, I mean, it's, everything went more than double.
On people counts.
Yeah, full times and all the people are not happy. And they're coming over here...
Not everything.
Asking them.
Not everything. The company that did the reassessment project, their estimate was that just in terms of taxes, what people will pay in their taxes, about one-third of the city will pay more, about one-third will stay about the same, and about one-third will pay less. So even though assessments have gone up, the value of the city, the properties in the city have gone up, but that can change the tax rates. And they're estimate that one-third will pay a little more, one-third will pay a little less, one-third will be about the same ballpark. The city has seen a lot of change since the last reassessment, it's been six, seven years. Think about all the different homes, what they're selling for now compared to six, seven years ago. Rising tide can raise all ships and make things more valuable now.
Have you ever been to Hudson? So it's now...
Did you lift your hands?
Sure, sir.
Well, the Wall Street, value and... Well, the one street value and downtown Columbia district value is not going to be the same. This is a commercial district, and that residency are one-unit building, which house was, twenty eighteen was fifty thousand, now a hundred eighty-eight thousand a dollar.
Again, this is, that's a question for the company that did those reassessments, they'll have much more thorough answer than I can provide.
That's a, that's not my, that company in City of Hudson, all residents come and talk to them.
Yes, they, their reviews are in Hudson, they do them at the firehouse, where they do their meetings.
Will you be with them to answer those questions?
No, I will be there for the second round of reviews, which will be in May.
So when, when, when will they be, you said at the firehouse?
They're at the firehouse, they are there all week. If you call the number, they'll set up a meeting with you.
And they're there from what time?
They'll, they'll set up a meeting time, I don't know if they're there nine to five, if there's nobody coming in.
So you just can't walk in and see them, you have to call?
Right.
So they're gonna have a meeting individually, or a group of people?
I don't know if they, if they'll invite a group of people, I haven't heard them do that yet.
So if you are not with them, how are you gonna do the interpret for other language people who don't understand English really good, but own the house?
Again, we'll have to work on interpreters, and I'll talk to them about finding a group of people.
He said, how are you gonna answer the question if you don't work with that company?
How are you gonna ask a question?
He said, how are you gonna answer the questions to the public if you don't work with GAR, that's right, that's what he's saying.
Yeah, and if he's got that, how is he gonna, he's gonna manage the interpreter?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm gonna answer a question. I've been, I've been collaborating with the company, I've worked with the company, but in terms of specific homes that you want to challenge, that's a question for the company right now.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be...
We're not going to let them retire.
So we don't need them, we just need cops.
Tiffany, can I...
Hello, Rob. Just a little clarity on the city website, they actually did put, there's on the landing page of the city website, there's an assessment tab, and if you go into that assessment tab, there's, there's literally step-by-step, there's three videos that take about twenty-three minutes, that talk about what an assessment is, what a mill rate is, what the city budget for real property taxes is versus the total assessment of the town, and how that divides out, you become mill rate, and how that mill rate could go down or up depending on the properties. It also has, there's an email address on the, on the letter that you got. That email address I found to be even quicker than calling, because I emailed GAR directly, and I said, I'd like to see my four property comps. Within two hours, I got those four property comps. Go back to the city website, you go right to the SGS system, look up those four properties, and you can, you can compare exactly what they're comparing you as with regard to that. And there's two, I'm sorry, I just went one other thing. On that SGS site, there's two links to two PDFs, there's a commercial link and a residential link to, you can print out the whole, I don't know if you have them right here, but you can print out the whole list of all the assessments, just, I just urge that the site's very well organized this year.
Yeah, like, that's good. The thing is, my community people, and Asian, and other people, they don't know how to use computers.
I agree, I'm not taking that away.
So they need help on that, you know, so I think we should have somebody over there to help them or something, they could come in and get help, you know what I mean?
Can we reach out to them?
Just follow up with Juwan, like, some homeowner don't have a computer.
Sure.
Forget about their nose computer.
Yeah.
They even don't have a computer.
Would you be the option assisting people in this?
Well, I mean, my, my, my challenge would be the language barrier, obviously, but I'm happy to sit down with you.
And I also didn't know that, how to, like, you know, use the computer.
I'll sit with the both of you and sit down with you tomorrow, if you want, if that, if that'll help.
From my community, is a lot of homeowners.
Yes.
Me and Juwan don't have enough time, like, you know, I have my own house too. So, I'm telling honestly, there is a lot of homeowner from my community. How many I can help, Juwan can help.
Who set them up at the firehouse? Can they come here and, and, and...
I'm sorry, who set what?
At the firehouse, so can they come here?
And also, I'm sorry to be late, also, people are working.
Right.
So if we can have a specific day and time, if they have to take off from the job, they can take off from the job, and they all can come together to get help from them.
Okay, well, come on, let's try to set something up for helping Bengali and Hispanic people, or anyone else who has...
I mean, if it is the same day, and with that time, me and Juwan, we might can try to convince sometime.
Do you think, you could identify someone who would be qualified to help other Bengalis and Bengali speakers?
I need to find out if anybody got a day off from the job, or if willing to take a day off from the job.
Yeah.
Everybody's keep working, so.
Yeah, that's why now, everybody needs to work, so.
Okay.
I'm sure if there's a date that we can find, you know, possibly, even if it's over the weekend, if working is an issue.
Weekend is a problem.
Something along those lines, maybe it can be split in two days.
If it is a one weekend, one weekend, Friday and Saturday, do it.
Well, I'll work with Justin to set that up.
Absolutely, I'm sure they'd be open to doing that.
You think, you think they could identify the kind of speakers they need to help?
I'd have to ask.
I'm just asking if you could help us to contact with them, or ask, any Friday and Saturday, they can come in City of Hudson, one of the places, and if we know ahead of, like, you know, when they are coming, we can tell that those owners to get together.
Absolutely, and another point is, you mentioned many homeowners don't have a computer, they can always call, they can always call and talk over the phone. I know that doesn't help with the language, yeah, yeah, that doesn't help, yeah.
Thank you, sir. And what's your name, please?
Justin.
Yes.
Hello, stand up and identify.
My name's Barry Sax. I understand that there is a time constraint on applying for consideration for the grieve, is that not so?
There is a time...
I think these people should know that.
There is a time constraint, but GAR has reassured me that they will take calls after that if...
Like it said, as I understand what I read is, Friday?
Friday.
Friday, hear that? Friday, people.
Can we ask for an extension right here and now?
Yeah, they assured me that if somebody calls them a day after, they'll take the call.
Do we have a formal extension?
Yeah.
Keep in mind, it runs out at the weekend. Right. Okay, yes.
Yes, Sarah Sterling for Shore. I know there are two interpreter, Bengali interpreters, ones with the Healthcare Consortium, and the others with the, for mental health, and I think they were gotten by Abduz, so I suggest contacting him for the names.
The two persons, mental health and one else?
Healthcare Consortium.
Thank you.
They help people with medical problems, but they would be good interpreters, I'm sure. And I'd suggest asking Abduz about that.
I believe somebody need to be know, understand about this part, like, you know, how to dispute to do the home assessment.
I'll talk to him.
This is a little bit tricky, this part is a little bit tricky than Health Consortium.
That should be paid for by GAR.
Sorry.
Those interpreters should be paid for by the company, not by the city, just to clarify, because that, they should be, legally you have to provide that service.
And there's also a Spanish interpreter teacher at the library you can reach out to as well.
At the library?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Linda.
You know, this whole process is not that easy or quick, because it's based on the houses that have sold. So in the past, when we've grieved, there's, you can grieve finding comparables all over the city. This one is very specific in how they design, how this assessment, this rebell is designed, so you have to find the comparables. And you find those comparables on the website, so this is a lot of research and work. It's not simple, it's not quick, and it's a complex. And I'm not sure whether GAR is gonna say, we're gonna help you, because if they're gonna help, they're gonna help one, they better help everybody. And I don't think GAR is gonna help everybody contest what they have put forward.
I got a long extension.
And the, from what I understand, the time factor is very soon, so I would suggest that all of, everybody get on the phone and make those appointments right now, before we wait for anything else. So those appointments are very important to, and then we'll try to figure out how to help, explain how you set up your comparables, so that you can, yes.
I don't mean to cut you off, the one thing I want to mention is, the company wants to make sure they get your assessment right. They did twenty-four hundred properties in the city, there're bound to be a few that are off. So if somebody comes forward and wants to challenge their assessment, they're gonna listen, and they're gonna show you the paperwork and show you what you need to do to do that. I know you said they don't want to help you, but we want to get it right. We want to get it right, we don't want somebody to think more or less.
And to get it right, you need to bring in the adequate information, and the adequate information happens to be on the computer.
Yes.
Or if you've had a, someone has given you a, has given you a recent, what's the word? Not appraisal of your home, that is, that's very concrete information, but how many people have had their home appraised in the last year?
Right.
So that, right away, and that would cost you eight or, right. So that would cost you a certain amount of money just to get the appraisal, and how do you do that in a week? So it's not as easy as one might think. And personally, I'm willing to help as best I can. Claudia and I have been working on this very hard, trying to understand it in a very short timeframe, and very quickly, so.
Well, Justin, also, I would suggest if GAR could tomorrow morning call AT&T Language Services, so that they actually can get, get that service in between the 800 number, so that there can be a translator via telephone, so that those can call at least, and get the basics to know what they have to do to kind of start the ball rolling, so they don't have to wait and struggle for a translator or somebody else in person.
Yeah.
There are a lot of...
One second. Irene?
Right.
Hold on, one sec, Irene?
This is off topic, but I would ask that as these meetings seem to get a little more confrontational than it seems they have been last year and this year, you know, a way to bring ourselves back to regular order. We hold a lot of strong beliefs among, among us, as do the people, you know, who live here, but the environment is, is getting, at least it seems to me, more confrontational, and I listen without being confronted, or at least I try to, but I would ask, you know, you consider that in...
Sure.
Good enough.
Hold on a second, to remind you that we are in the informal meeting, so, you know, the structure's a little looser, more people can talk.
Right.
So I understand what you're saying?
Yeah.
And we will try to exert order, and I'm watching for any confrontation that goes over the line of accusing somebody, or questioning somebody's motives, I mean, these are the answer, these are the, when you, when you have to silence people. But so far, you know, it hasn't happened from the council.
I don't understand, and I just wanted you to explain, you know, you know...
No, no, I don't think it's...
Well, we can discuss it on the floor or after the meeting, but I still would like you to explain it to me, what you were saying, because it seems like this concern came about because of my constituent expressing herself, and the problem is...
Well, that's, that's just the most recent, and it's not that I feel she shouldn't speak like what she should.
Well, I just want you to understand, she cut me off, so cut her off too, but I just want you to understand this, you know, that's the reason why a lot of my constituents do not want to come here, the city will want to speak up, because they feel that, you know, they're gonna be judged the way you just mentioned, you know, and they have every right to speak up, whether they're renter or a property owner, but I just want a full understanding, you know, I've been an old man now going on six years, and I encourage everyone, not just my constituents, but everyone to come to city hall meetings, and a lot of people that look like me have, have, you know, issues coming here, because they feel that once they voice their opinions, or they speak up, they're gonna be silenced. And I encourage them to speak up, because I would yell with you, you know, I just want some clarification.
Someone better say, but I brought me into a big pile, and saying we're racist, we want bad things to happen.
She didn't say that, I'm the neighbor, I'm looking, don't just look at, I was just supporting Caucasus, she says support minorities, she didn't say anything about being racist.
Okay, I think we'll end that right there. Irene, your point is taken. I think there's a different standard for the community than there is for us on the council.
You're right.
Right.
Because the only way I can tell them to stop is by imposing order through a sergeant in arms, and I don't think we really want to do that. In the council, I can give you play, if I have to. Kamal, please.
Can I just make a quick clarifying statement?
Sure.
This is not a council that's not for you, so, I don't know what happened earlier, but like, I respect the passion, but I just have to say, because it's gonna eat at my soul, like, there's no one in this city that has done more for youth than me, so like, I kind of like, take that differently, as like, you know, them judging the council as like, we're not for you. There is a lot of work that's still to be done, and I know there's people in this room that are willing to do that work, so I just want to clarify that part.
Thank you. Juwan?
Yeah, I don't think, every, I mean, everybody like kids over here, everyone like you, I don't think, nobody, you know, I mean, I don't know what she was thinking, but...
I knew what she was thinking, I've been to the council for six years, we've just been there, councils, and we're constantly fighting to support the youth center, and that's a problem. It shouldn't, when it comes to children, it shouldn't even be a question, we should be saying, do they need more? That's what we should be saying, but every, and this is my third council that I've been on, every council is a fight, it's a battle to support these kids, and that's a problem, and that's where her passion comes from. I went there, you can ask Nick Zachos, I went there, the old council member, I walked on those beams, I saw the pigeons, I saw everything that these kids were enduring, and then when we bring it here on the floor, it's a battle, it's a fight, and it's disgusting.
Can I say something? I mean, like Kamal said, I mean, we, as a council, passed the biggest budget for the youth. Rich and I sat in a committee for two years to raise almost eighteen thousand dollars for the youth center. I donate my salary, I do things behind the scenes that nobody knows, and to be lumped into this and saying we're not for the youth, I think we need to recognize what we have done, yes, and move forward, but a lot of this stuff, you know, takes thinking, and you know, we, what we, and how we spread this money, we still also, as a council, owe ourselves to the taxpayers, because like we said, we're talking about assessments, this and that, the money that goes to, to all of our services is not free money, it's the taxpayers' money, and we need to be responsible with that money, with, with also, you know, being at the program, at the youth center, seeing what's going on, and see, wait a minute, is this being, you know, responsible, you know, DPW, wherever department, we need to be responsible. But for, you know, for somebody saying, you know, I mean, I, like Kamal, I've been for the youth, and that just hurt my feelings, for everything I've done, I dressed up, I did...
So you're dressed up as a polar bear?
It shouldn't, I, it doesn't have my feelings, I support the youth, I didn't take a place in other, because I just support the youth.
But this, this council has done a lot of...
And I like, Tom and I, Peter, we, you know, helped organize the polar punch, but also, Tom and I helped organize the polar punch for the past couple of years with Peter Frank, and the, but also to give credit to Rob and Tom as well, who plunged into the cold water, and helped raise money for the youth department and the fire department as well, not to leave those two out.
Taxpayers have children too.
Moving on, Claudia.
Yes, Claudia Rose Three, I'm not gonna stand because, I'll stand, but I was at the last tourism board meeting, and there's a hundred and forty thousand dollars...
We're changing topic here, is that it?
Sorry?
You want to pick up?
Well, I'm talking about money that's available to the city, that's now being considered to brand, to pay a company to brand Hudson. So I would like to suggest again that that money, and it was mentioned, that that money could go to other things, and that's a hundred and forty thousand dollars that the tourism committee could possibly think about donating to projects such as the youth, how about some crosswalks, just to bring that up, and things like that. So there's money there, a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
And when's your next Thursday board meeting?
Fourth Tuesday.
Fourth Tuesday. Fourth Tuesday, which is... You got a calendar handy? Fourth Tuesday, which is, I've got a calendar handy.
Oh.
Let's see.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth? March twenty-sixth at 5:30?
5:30.
And where is it?
Um, at the Chamber, Chamber of Commerce.
At the Chamber of Commerce. I encourage those concerned with that budget, and they may need more to play, because the figure goes up with each filing of the lodging tax. I encourage you to attend that meeting, and let your voices be heard. Next topic, or is there any more topics, someone like, Sher Shah, sorry.
Yeah, I was just saying, when is the last date to, to speak to the Gar Association?
Friday, but they, they will take calls after Friday.
Friday, can they increase the days?
Yeah, you want an extension, I will speak.
Yeah, I think we already established that first.
Okay, this is the main ticket.
How long is the extension?
Uh, can you tell me, Justin?
Day by day?
I'm going to find out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second, anybody else in the council? Yes, please stand and identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Arianna from the Columbia County Sanctuary Movement. I live nearby and also do work in Hudson. And there's a couple of us that are here actually to ask questions and also to voice our concerns as to what happened on March 5th, between Hudson Police, the Hudson Police Department and also ICE, and we want to, especially since we have an executive order already in place, and it's very clear that they're violating that, so we want to know who do we need to hold accountable in regards to that, so.
Well, in simple terms, the council did not control the police department, we only control their budget to an extent. I guess you'd have to talk to the mayor. He is the boss of the police, since there's no commissioner in between right now, the mayor is in charge of this. It's, the executive order was issued by the previous mayor, so either he can rescind it or revise it.
That's a big issue that we don't have a commissioner, I feel like, because it seems like we've been just trying to get meetings with the mayor and also the police commissioner, and since there's no in-between, we've been having, we're just facing a, a law, and that's been such a big issue for us and in the community, and we're very concerned, and we want to know who do we need to voice that and be heard, because we don't feel like we are being heard.
Are you saying you didn't, you hadn't been able to make a meeting? Wait.
I, I contacted him, he did return my phone call, but I do not feel he is understanding, he's not getting my frustration, my anger as to what's happening in my community, he's not being targeted, he's not being detained, deported, taken away, kidnapped from his family. So of course, I want to figure out who do I need to hold accountable?
Did I ask your question, are you approaching mayor on your own or through your, through your group?
On my own, as part of the community that's indirectly affected, and also STCSO.
Right, okay.
I would also just like to, my name is Brian McCormick, I am the executive director of the Columbia County Sanctuary Movement, I grew up in Hudson and I currently coach at high school. The problem with this is that if our only person to seek redress with is the mayor, it means that that necessitates a closed-door meeting, that doesn't mean that we can have the forum here. So where does the community get to get involved in this conversation besides who is allowed to enter that room? And last time I checked, when I was invited to the meeting, it was five guys in a room, and the only reason there was a woman there is because I brought them from our movement. So there's clearly issues that we need to address publicly that somebody with power privately can, can fix, but it has to be resolved somewhere, and the public has to be involved in the discussion.
I'm happy to have this discussion in the council. I guess we could do it now if you'd like.
Yeah.
Excuse me?
Mayor?
Yes? Mayor's standing right here, so I'm more than open to any conversation. I made a statement that I, I believe in, I met with you a couple of times now, I'll be very happy, I'm sorry you felt that I was brushing you off, that is not the intent, I made it very clear that I was one of the original supporters, I sat in this area, this room, two years ago, supported the fair, I'm, supported the sanctuary city resolution, voted for the sanctuary city resolution as is, the welcoming and inclusive, as we call the resolution, and I continue to support it. As I've said, I, anybody who has any information, please come to me, we tried to gather both the police, we tried to gather you, to find out what exactly happened, if there is anything wrong, if something did, somebody did something wrong, including myself, it is my commitment that we will fix it. And I think that we discovered in our meetings that there are a couple of issues that need some additional clarification, we're working on that. So it is my, I will continue, we're meeting again next week, we can have a public meeting, I'm not, I'm not, I do not object to public meetings, it's just getting to the facts and getting to the base. Again, if the police did something wrong, we will correct it, if I've done something wrong, it will be corrected. I voted for the law and the resolution, I will continue to uphold the resolution, in addition to making sure the citizens and the visitors to Hudson are safe and protected.
I'm sorry, but your support does not feel, it does not feel like it's coming from a real, good, good, good part.
But we don't really challenge people's motives, that's not really how we proceed.
Well, we have the mayor here, he said he's going to take our questions, so I am here voicing my concerns.
Hold on a second, we're concerned by your concerns, but you don't challenge someone's motives, talk about the content of what they're saying.
Okay, I'll rephrase it, when we went into this meeting, the mayor didn't even have a copy of the executive order, so I don't have to challenge motives, I'm just stating a fact, that the people who came prepared to the meeting were the sanctuary movement who had the first executive order, the resolution, and the second executive order in chronological order. So, I mean, you, we can say that we're not challenging motives, but there's still intention behind actions, and if the police chief isn't willing to question a misunderstanding in the executive order, and the mayor isn't even, doesn't even have a copy of the executive order, then again, where do we hold somebody accountable? And the things that were being discussed in that meeting, within one business day, I've already been able to find two individuals who said that the police, the Hudson Police Department did not honor the language access program that's written into the order, the two individuals that were actually in my car the day that ICE tried to take away my Fourth Amendment and the Fourth Amendment rights of individuals in my vehicle, those two individuals did not have language access when they had an encounter with HPDA. And in addition, I will also add that the reports around these encounters are confidential reports that only go to the mayor and the police committee, and there's nowhere in the order that says these have to be confidential reports.
The reports go to the entire common council, I did have the executive order, I didn't have it in my hand, but of course I have the copy of it, and I apologize I didn't bring it to the meeting, we were looking at the, the resolution, and I apologize then, so all I can say is if there are people that have additional information, if you have new information, Brian, bring it to us.
I just said?
Well, I just heard, yeah, so that's fine, as I said in the paper, I'll say to you, and I'll say to anyone in this room publicly, bring me the information. Well, I think Brian's point is, you brought the information and the...
No, he just mentioned two new people that I...
No, 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 the information about the interpretation of the second. Exactly, we all agree that there was some, there needs to be some clarification, specifically about post and pre, and, because it was, it wasn't, you heard the police chief, so we will, we're having, we've already scheduled the next meeting to discuss it, we can have the meeting in here and have the public here, I, I don't particularly care as long as we don't talk about names or anything like that.
There are clear holes in the resolution, especially when it comes to arrests, because it says, the resolution says we're not supposed to be asking status, but on post-arrest, we are asking for status.
I'm sorry, what?
I just want to say something, you know, to whoever it was that sent me that email, I got, I just want to say this to you, the City of Hudson is a welcoming and inclusive city, and anytime our neighbors are under attack, we will stand for them, ICE has no place in our city, so you can keep your threatening emails, it does not scare me.
That's just a quick... So the meeting is at what time this week, and it's public?
2:30 PM, March 21st here.
Which is, what day of the week is that?
Wednesday.
21st? Wednesday. Thursday? Thursday? So Thursday, March 21st at 2:30 PM here, the public can come and be part of this conversation is what you're saying?
Sure.
I'm just reiterating, okay, just want to make sure that's clear, so everyone's invited.
We could also have it here on Monday night, after people get out of work, so the public could attend.
Yeah, that's a pretty tricky time.
Let me see if that compulsion, anything else on the city agenda, I mean, some people were... Well, I'll ask the other attendees, there's nothing happening.
There's only one other attendee that's not in this room, I think we got the majority.
I do, I always want to be a attendee.
So can you make it at 6:00 PM on Monday night, Mayor? Okay, let's make it 6:00 PM, Monday night?
Which Monday?
Oh, sorry, that's coming Monday.
March, what year? No, you're saying Monday night?
Eighteenth.
Yeah.
At 6:00 PM right here?
No, it'd be the nineteenth. No.
And Brian, if you have more evidence of HPD not following the guidelines, please bring that, get that in order before the meeting so that it can be addressed, or send it ahead of time so that maybe the chief can explain what happened.
Yeah, I'll just add one more thing while we're here, which is, there's claims that by not asking what type of warrant ICE is coming to town with, and just with all disregard sending the police anyway, that they are not assisting ICE.
They are.
They're parked behind my vehicle as if they're pulling me over, and I was reminded by people who were there that the HPD were taking pictures or video of me when they were passing, so that seems to be assistance to me. And if they're there for public safety, for whose public safety? Clearly they're only there for the public safety of the federal agents and not the public safety of the individuals in my vehicle or myself.
That's right.
I think I was sort of addressing that Francisco document I sent you, that that's the problem when they don't identify what kind of warrant it is. So if they, if they're, if they're coming at you with a civil warrant that has no bearing on the larger issue, then it's really you the police should be protecting, not ICE.
Exactly.
They've created...
That's correct, that's correct.
No, just, I didn't define protecting the people. Claudia, I'm not able to be here on Monday, can we do it another reason, please? Tuesday is the meeting, Friday of this week. Friday this week is open.
15th, 6 o'clock.
Is that all right with you, Brian?
With everybody else who is invited, yeah.
6:00 PM Friday right here. Any other public comments?
I have a comment, I would just like to remind you that I'm having a surgery on the 22nd, so if you can schedule our equal meeting, for a different location, thank you.
I have a motion to adjourn. Okay, Dewan, Tiffany, Rich, Ron, Tom, you decide.